Cubs Scout Pack 331 is going to present the colors and lead us in the pledge. Go ahead.
Color Guard, attention. Audience, please rise. Color Guard, further march. Scouts salute. Those not in uniform, please place your right hand over your heart. Color Guard, color guard, color guard, cross the colors. Color Guard, post the flag of the United States of America. Color Guard, proudly post the flag, the flag of Illinois flag. Color Guard, honor your colors. Please, please receive the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two, color guard, return phrase. Audience, please.
You know what, let's get a picture before you guys leave. Thank you. Do you want to come up, we can take a photo real quick? Alright, boys and girls, thank you for coming. I really appreciate it. Stay as long as you like, please. Alright, so we'll move on to, again, thank you for coming. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting. We won't be offended if and when you do decide to leave. Move on to public part, actually, we take, we didn't call roll yet. Let's do that. Go ahead.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Yeah.
Trustee Heinz. Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisack.
Here.
And Trustee Bond.
Here.
Alright, we do have a quorum this evening. Alright, move on to public participation. Item A, I'll invite Tom Rickert, Kane County DOT, to come up. Thanks for coming tonight, Tom. Appreciate it. He was going to address the board on Orchard and 30.
Well, hopefully, each one of you have received a copy of the packet I put in front of you. What I wanted to do is just talk about where this project currently stands. I think, as many of you are aware, the US-30 study is generally completed. It's got design approval, but the overall cost of the improvements of US-30 from Illinois 47 all the way to 31 is over $70 million. And that's a pretty significant hurdle. I think those of you that are involved in various aspects of federal and state projects, a $70 million project, it takes a long time. Usually, it's addressed incrementally. And so while the design approval for Phase 1 is complete, going into Phase 2 engineering, right-of-way acquisition, and ultimately, construction, none of those funds for over $70 million are currently in IDOT's program. And so, about a year ago, the village president approached IDOT and said, "Well, what can we do to address the concerns that we already have before us at Orchard and 30?" IDOT met both with the village president, as well as myself, in order to look at the potential of proceeding forward with a Phase 1 interim improvement. And that Phase 1, IDOT did complete, and design approval was given a few months ago for the Phase 1 engineering. And the county budgeted monies in order to proceed forward with Phase 2 engineering and land acquisition. Phase 2 engineering, just, that's the terminology us engineers use, but Phase 2 is essentially the final engineering. It takes about a year to complete that, and then right-of-way land acquisition. Depending on how quickly the land acquisition goes, it's usually 12 to 18 months for land acquisition. Sometimes, we get lucky in the, in the final engineering, and we're able to remove the right-of-way from the project. If you look at the last page, there are two, two elements of right-of-way. They're in blue and yellow that we need to look at acquiring. So it is, it is something where this, this, we're going to proceed forward, like I said, with the final engineering and the land acquisition. Hopefully, we can pull that together within a two-year timeframe and, and move forward with construction. I think most of you have experienced the delays at US-30 in Orchard, especially in the PM, between 3:00 and 6:00 PM. Those delays are fairly significant. As, in engineering terminology, we refer to it a Level Service F. And so it is something that, with the urging of the village president, we decided to figure out how do we could proceed forward and, and resolve this. The county's budget, as I said, has the final engineering and the land acquisition. The, the construction is the one hurdle that we need to start discussions on. There are opportunities. What, what, part of my job, just to introduce myself again, I'm Tom Rickert. I, I kind of have two hats. I'm the Chief of Staff for the Division of Transportation of Kane County, but I'm also, I'm also the Executive Director for the Kane and Kendall Council of Mayors. And so, your village president and Mayor Shelkey are two of my bosses. And, and so, I try to do my best to figure out, how do we bring federal and state funds into play so that we can continue to move projects forward? My, I have staff that does all the federal programming, as well as we assist in the various state funding programming for transportation projects. So this is an area that we typically, part of my job and my staff's job, is to pull together funding packages. And as you can see by the report I handed out to you, the project for this interim improvement is approximately $2.1, $2.2 million in estimate. So my job will be to try to figure out, okay, how can we get the, those funding dollars in order to do the construction? It's, even pulling together $2.2 million is a challenge. I'll just be honest with that. To try to find federal and state dollars, especially in the last few years for these types of projects, is, is a task. And so generally, it's a funding package. We will be coordinating with the State of Illinois on potential state dollars. We will be looking at submittals for various federal-type funding. The two primary sources of potential funding is what we refer to as STP funding, Surface Transportation Program Funds, and then CMAC, which is Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Funds. These will be the two primary funding sources over the next year that we will be submitting to, through the federal process and through CMAP, the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. So I just wanted to bring you an update and let you know, I think many of you already knew that these efforts were going on, but just in case you didn't, just to let you know where the project stands, why we had to do an interim project at this point in time. And, and, and I guess I'm just here to answer any questions, too, if I'm able, so.
Thanks, Tom. The one, the one comment that I would add, too, is when we met recently, it also included Kendall County. So Kendall County is well-aware of this project and supportive and would, it seems like we'd be putting together a funding package for the Phase 2, for the design of this, that included funds from multiple sources, you know, Kane, Kendall, and potentially Village of Montgomery. Reality is, we need to move the project forward without federal dollars for interim improvements like we have. This is the kind of thing that I think building a coalition is probably in our best effort to do. So if there's any specific questions, go ahead.
Is there a role the public can play in making their wishes known about the importance of this project?
I think, I think they've done a good job already. While this project did not require a public hearing, the, the project, all the property owners along the project received letters from the State of Illinois describing the project, the type of improvements. We've also gotten quite a few requests for pedestrian bike improvements. And if you look at the design that's in front of you, it, it starts to address some of those requests. Again, this is an interim project, but for an interim project, it goes a long ways. And so we're, at this point in time, that's the design that we're going to be proceeding forward. IDOT essentially has handed, handed over to us a Phase 1 designed-approved project with, with all the environmental clearances. So this is, this is real easy to start the Phase 2. Just so you're aware, within the week, we will be submitting our requests for proposals for Phase 2 engineering. As I said, it was budgeted, as well as staff has put together the, the scope for the project, for the Phase 2 project. So this is, this is moving. And, and that's not to say that I won't be coming back and saying, "Okay, this, this is the funding package that we need to start looking at for some of the incremental steps." But we just felt like we needed to get it start, get it started. Again, as, as your village president said, Kendall County has said, "We will look at assisting," as well as the Village of Montgomery said that they would, too. The, that type of an agreement will probably come after we start Phase 2, and, and hopefully, we could pull together something that helps to keep this moving. And then also, hopefully, we could pull together the federal funds.
I'd like to personally thank you for your time and effort on this. This is, I hear about this from about 10,000 people that live west of Orchard Road, that they're tired of the traffic issues. It's unfortunate that the, the state doesn't necessarily step up and handle their obligations, I guess is a good, good word. And I think that this shows that with Kane and, and with the Kane County DOT and with the Village of Montgomery, this is something, just like with the water, where we're looking at Yorkville and Oswego, where we're doing a combined, joint effort, and we're trying to get the most out of our dollars. So I, for one, I say thank you.
Okay. And, and thank you. I, I appreciate the comments. I, I do want to say that the State of Illinois did step in, and they did do the Phase 1 engineering, engineering all at their cost. So they, they spent the last two years putting together all the environmental studies, all the engineering studies. And we're hopeful that they will also step up to the plate when it comes to the remaining stages of the project.
If they need to be poked and prodded, then we can do that.
Alright. Well, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
I appreciate you coming this evening. I promised you to be first on the agenda, so you can get out of here.
Thank you very much.
But again, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Alright, we'll move on to item B, under public comment. We have Jose De Leon of 252 Parker Avenue regarding speed bumps on Parker Court. Thank you, sir.
Hello. I was supposed to be here last week. I'm sorry, our last meeting. And basically, I just wanted some input on how to address the problem over here in our neighborhood, that, you know, people are driving fast and kind of carelessly, in a way, whether they're picking up their kids or dropping them off. It's been, it's gotten better. The police department called me up, put up some signs. I really don't know how to handle it, so they, I'm glad they called me up, and it seems to be a little better. And then they, this year, they put a new pavement at the school, and I think they've got a better route now going there, so I think it's better. So at this point, you know, I'd like to back off a little bit and see what happens. And if the police would just, you know, from time to time, come by and, and check into that would be very helpful.
Awesome.
I had a quick question, since I'm here. Our mailboxes are like Aurora delivery, and, you know, they kind of look, kind of poopy in our street, and they're right in front of my house, and, and, you know, before the meeting's over or after the meeting, if somebody could tell me how to start the process and try and do something with our mailboxes.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that one, but we can, everybody can find some mailboxes.
Because our mailboxes, we, the whole block, the Aurora, Aurora doesn't want to deliver to our homes, and, and so we need some kind of input on how to make it look a little more presentable for our area on our mailboxes. Yeah, I wasn't really prepared for that.
Aurora address or Montgomery address?
Excuse me?
Do you have Aurora address or Montgomery?
Yeah, yeah, well, we, we have Aurora mailing our whole neighborhood. We're in Montgomery, but Aurora delivers our mail. And I've talked to the, the delivery guy, and he says, "Well, you got to go through the, whoever it is at the post office," and, and whoever that would be.
Is it a group? I'm sorry, is it a joint mailbox?
Yeah, but it's all like layered out, and we, you know, looks really, you know, south of the border-like kind of look. And so, I would like to kind of clean it up, whether it get a big metal box or however, to do something, you know?
Yep.
But it's like, they were telling me that Aurora, the, whoever the postmaster is or whatever, says, "Well, we're going to charge everybody $5 a month," or whatever the cost is. Well, do something, you know, you know, send us out some letters or something, and I'm sure we would all oblige. But we haven't got nothing. That was just kind of like a smart allegory remark I got from the, from my delivery guy, so.
Well, it's, it's, like she kind of alluded to, it's a little bit outside of what the Village of Montgomery would do, but what we can do is connect you with the postmaster in Aurora, or at least have.
Well, I, I live in Montgomery, you know? I'm, I'm on the board, and everybody from.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying that actually delivering the mail and, and dealing with the post office, it is entirely up to them and their decision, but we can get, we can find contact information and certainly help with the conversation, if that would work.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay.
Something, like I said, I don't, I don't really know how to, how to handle it, because, you know, it's, it was like passed on to us forever, from whenever it started.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Alright, item C, this is the one that I talked about with the Cub Scouts, is the public comment. So this is the two-minute opportunity that any member of the public that's here that is not on the agenda, or just has something they want to share with the village board, now is the opportunity to come and address the board on any topic.
I'm trying to go fast. I got two minutes. Good evening. My name is Robert Yarborough. My wife and I came in today to speak about what we're looking at here in the city of Montgomery. We don't live here in the city of Montgomery, but we're looking to put a business here. We're the owners of RV's Home of the Hoagie. We opened up four years ago in Plainfield. We also acquired the Long John Silver on Lake Street in Aurora, and we're opening up there. And we were driving through, because my mother lives near here, and happened to see an old Pizza Hut over in, on Douglas, and thought that the building was, the owner's not here, right? Thought the building was hideous, but it might be something we might be able to tear down and do something with. So we wanted to at least introduce ourselves to the city and let you know what we're trying to accomplish, because we've noticed and we've been told by a number of people that work within the city that there's a food shortage here. Our restaurants are open 24 hours on the weekends and open until about 11 o'clock at night during the weekdays. My grandfather and my great uncle started Home of the Hoagie about 60 years ago, so it's not something that's, we're experimenting with. It's a destination spot. If you actually pull it up online, you'll see a number of people who have visited our restaurants, who happen to be famous, all the football players, so forth and so on. We're kind of famous on the South Side of Chicago, and what we're trying to do is take aim at some of the bigger facilities like Portillo's and Bono Beef and so forth like that. And I think that Montgomery is a good location for our commissary and one of our restaurants, so just wanted to come in and introduce ourselves.
Awesome. Thank you for coming. And if you don't have Rich Young's contact information, our Director of Community Development, he would be an excellent point of contact, and honestly, would look forward to working with you.
Okay, thank you. I've been speaking with Teresa, I mean, I'm sorry, I spoke with Teresa as well, but I've been speaking with Charlene, and she said she was going to take me around to see some of the properties that are available.
Awesome.
If that guy doesn't stop doing whatever, because he, I mean.
Have you ever considered?
Expensive property here in Montgomery.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
Have you ever considered locating west of Orchard Road?
I have, actually.
I have 10,000 people that would love to.
Somebody mentioned that to me for about a week or so, that there's something that's need to be there. It's not my first rodeo, and I thought that maybe it might be a little bit less expensive to do something in an area that needs so much, with the help that's available to people to do some of the things. Aurora, I had a horrible time working with the city of Aurora. I've put $150,000 cash above and beyond what I was budgeting to put into that location, simply because of the bureaucracy, and they had absolutely no idea of what they wanted to do. Being that it wasn't my property and it wasn't my responsibility, however, I'd made an obligation already, I felt that I'd go ahead and do it. I ended up putting a $40,000 grease trap in, $10,000 roof, $10,000 into the structure, and then when I got ready to do the rehabilitation of the inside of the building, they said, "Okay, well, we'll go ahead and give you the permits, but we need you to do the parking lot," which ended up with a price tag of $81,000. Now, that's almost $250,000 into a property I don't own, before I sell a sandwich. I went to Plainfield. I did my build-out. I did all my research. I had all my permits done, and I was open in three months. Mayor of Plainfield came by, Chief of Police, everybody comes by, and we had a great time. It was wonderful. No problems. This is the second, third time I've tried to put a restaurant in Aurora, and it hasn't worked out. I don't know what the problem is, but I thought I'd start off by coming in, introducing myself, see if we could smooth the road to get it done a little quicker and a little easier. I'd like to sell the sandwich before I start spending millions of dollars. I don't have that, so.
Welcome to Montgomery.
Pardon me?
Welcome to Montgomery.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Alright, is there anybody else under public comment? Don't want to cut anybody off. If any Cub Scout has any questions they want to ask? Alright.
Thinking about it? No, no, no.
We'll go, we'll move on. Under item D, we do have a public hearing this evening on Aurora University's Special Service Area. So I'll go ahead and open that public hearing. If there's any member of the public that wishes to address that topic, now would be your opportunity at the public hearing. I'm not seeing anybody jumping at the opportunity. Don't want to cut anybody off. Okay? So hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to item E, which we are going to postpone at this point. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll read the items, entertain a motion for approval. We have the minutes of the village board meeting of September 10th. Executive session minutes of September 10th. Accounts payable through September 20th. And ordinance 1826, amending the village code, creating an award, a Class G liquor license, and reduction of Class D liquor license. This is a waiver of first and passage on the second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll?
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
And that carries 5-0. Thank you. Moving on to item A this evening, we have recommendation of Plan Commission, or from Plan Commission, PC 2018-019, special use request for outdoor use, principal use, located at 2020 Albright Road. This is JMB Investment Partners. And this is the recommendation. Item B is ordinance 1827, first reading of that granting that special use, if that's our pleasure. So with that, I'll ask Director Young for summary of the item.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, this item is before you for 2020 Albright Road, JMB Investments, who currently owns the property and uses it as a outdoor storage facility, primarily for trucks and trailers, has come to the village and asked that they be able to slightly expand their use. And with that, we have the opportunity, with the request for a special use, to bring the site more into compliance with the zoning ordinance, with the type of surface that the property would have for the truck storage itself. Some added landscaping and fencing that would go along with the improvements to the site, so this would improve the aesthetics along Route 31 and Route 30 in this area, because it's very visible from the interchange. And the Plan Commission, at their last meeting, reviewed this item and recommended approval of a special use for this site. And that's their recommendation, so we recommend approval of the ordinance at a future meeting.
Alright, thank you. Any questions, comments from the board?
I have a question. And the petitioner is alright with coming in compliance?
Yes.
Is there any indication of any future building on this site?
It's possible. There was a building previously on this site that was utilized for a number of years. It is possible that the site could be redeveloped at some point in the future with a structure, but as of right now, the intent is to just use it for a storage facility.
Mr. Bonk, I think, has kept that whole area really nice, especially, what is it, north of, of Killian, say, that whole area. He has developed real nice, you know, kind of without any help as far as the old boards were. So I think he's, he's really done a good job, and, and that area is definitely industrial.
Alright. If there are no other comments, entertain a motion to approve the recommendation, which is item A.
I move to accept the recommendation of the Plan Commission.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll?
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
And Trustee Bond?
Yes.
And that carries 5-0. Item B is the ordinance 1827. This is first reading. Is there any objection to putting that on consent at a future meeting?
No.
Alright, we'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, item C, we are going to, that's ordinance 1823, related to the public hearing that we passed on. We're going to table that this evening. And move on to item D. Ordinance 1824, this is proposing the establishment of SSA Number 41. This is for Aurora University's Spartan Athletic Complex, and this is waiver of first, passage on the second. Who gets this one?
I can take it. This is our standard Special Service Area. This is the 41st Special Service Area that the village will establish, primarily for stormwater management and detention basin maintenance. And pretty straightforward, the university understands that this is how they will maintain their, their property in proper order, so.
And this is a backup SSA, essentially, right? Unless we need to levy.
This, this essentially stays dormant, right? Unless it's needed? Okay.
That's correct.
Alright. Any comments or questions? Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
And Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Here's 5-0. Thank you. Alright, moving on, last item for action this evening, we have Resolution 2018-015, authorizing a recapture agreement with Speedway LLC at 2110 Orchard Road.
You skipped.
You missed one.
Hold on. Oh, sorry. I have that we already voted on that, 5-0. So don't let me down. I'm just kidding. So item E, we have Resolution 2018-016, approving the use of 2018 MFT funds for salt storage facility repairs. Director, ready?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick background, I mean, a resolution needs to be approved by the village board to utilize motor fuel, motor fuel tax funds for certain projects. And I'm presenting to you a proposal to spend $2,350 using the MFT funds for roof repairs to our salt dome. I was hoping to put all of our salt usage and everything else on there, but we are still waiting for the salt prices to come in, so to get this expedited, so we can get the roof repaired before winter. Asking that we approve this resolution and get this over to IDOT for approval, so we can actually utilize the funds to, to make this happen.
Awesome.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll? Call the roll.
I was trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
All right. Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
And trustee Lee?
Yes.
And that carries five zero, just as I thought, thank you. All right, move on to item F again. It's Resolution twenty eighteen dash zero one five, authorizing a recapture agreement with Speedway at twenty-one ten Orchard Road.
This is an agreement that's been worked out with Speedway. As you know, when they put in their facility, they had a substantial amount of sewer and water work to do to get to their site. Part of that was oversized, so that it could be utilized and tapped into in the future when the Shearing property, the Shearing and Conti property is developed, and is the basis for a second source of water line service to those properties. So it was right that a recapture agreement be put forward for a portion of the improvements that went into the Speedway site. It works out to be approximately ten percent of the water line that was oversized, so that it can service property further to the south in the future. The Shearings are in agreement with this recapture agreement, and Speedway's looking for recapture at some time in the future when the Shearing property is actually developed. So we recommend approval.
All right. And I know that we've had some conversations with the Shearing family as well on this, so they're up to, up to date on it.
They're up to date and in agreement with this proposal.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All right.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
And that carries five zero, thank you. We don't have anything for discussion, is there anything new or unfinished?
Halloween safety event plans are coming together well for the, out at the police station, I believe the date is the fourteenth?
Yes.
Sunday the fourteenth, so it's gonna, in conjunction with Fox Valley Park District this year, and there's gonna be a touch of truck portion that the park district is handling, and it's gonna be located to the west of the police station now. There's a little cul-de-sac back there that borders on the ball fields for the touch of truck. So a little bit, it's grown so much that we need a little bit more space. So the folks over at the police station and the committee have been working really hard to get everything together. I spent yesterday building a ghost, so.
Cool. All right, anything else? Thank you.
I don't know if you're gonna talk about the street signs or not?
Yeah.
I just wanna inform the board that actually, for the, we had those residents that came in about the parking complaints on K Street, the actual signs have been installed, except for one, they had a mismatch on utility lines, so we couldn't put that in the ground until that gets located again. But chief went over there today, and said that they're all up, they're ready to be enforced, so just got that completed.
Thank you.
All right. I'll add one thing to this, so it saves me from having to email everybody individually. Before the meeting tonight, the Montgomery Foundation awarded three out of the four scholarships they're going to award to all four of our elementary schools, five hundred dollars to each, to be used to help their facility. They wrote a grant application, so we'll, we'll report back on that in the future, but just thought I'd share that with the board this evening. All right, future meetings, our next village board meeting is Monday, October eighth, in this room at seven PM. At this point, I would like to adjourn to executive session to discuss employment of an employee and litigation which is filed and pending.